I mean, it's not by meaning, it's Bella and Tom. Excuse me.
Oh, there she is. Why don't we get back?
Resources Committee meeting to order.
Ms. Butts?
Yeah.
Ms. Shaqiri?
Here.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Here.
Ms. Rashid?
Here.
And Mr. Parker?
Here.
Of note, we're taking this joint committee out of order and starting with the Human Resources Committee meeting, and I present Exhibit 15, the regular employment report detailing the new hires, the transfers, the retirements, resignations, and terminations, along with compensation changes for the committee to review. So moved.
Second.
Second.
Um, I don't think you're on the.
Oh, second.
Thank you.
I'm not on.
No.
Ms. Shaqiri?
Yes.
Ms. Rashid?
Yes.
Thank you.
Tana, Abby, Anthony, it's your friend.
It's Tuesday.
It's your friend, you're the other side.
Well, according to our new bylaws, he is allowed to, well, we did not have quorum, right? But we do have quorum, so that's not an issue.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
You were just too quick.
Um, all right. I present the Retirement Recognition Citation Exhibit 16. A citation has been issued for the following staff members, or will be issued by this committee on the occasion of retirement. This is for presentation at the full board meeting later this week. Philip Krieter, 38 years as a branch clerk. Timothy Damon, nine years as a page. Cedric Johns, 12 years, Director of Employee and Labor Relations. And William Chase, 38 years as a library assistant. So for consideration of this committee to pass along to the full board, we want to resolve that the citation for the above staff members presented by the Board of Trustees in appreciation of their faithful and dedicated service given to the library be recorded in the minutes of our full board meeting and be it further resolved that the citation be sent to them forthwith if they are not present at the meeting this coming Thursday. So moved.
Second.
Ms. Butts?
Yes.
Ms. Shaqiri?
Yes.
Ms. Rashid?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, well, I know we have a couple extra minutes.
Yes.
What branches were Phil and William at?
Phil is here, and he is a long-term, he started this and stuff here many years ago, 38 years ago, moved through the system of branches, and then he's been in finance and special collections for a long time. And then our super clerk, Phil, at West Park, he's been in the whole side. He's pretty amazing.
And he's, Bill's been, or William's been here as well?
Yeah, Bill Chase has been here at Maine and Mr. Krieter at West Park. He's got, you know, all of us to be here. He was here since we started here, and.
Well, I was gonna say, since we have a couple extra time, I'm like, 38 years.
He come over in West Park, he was everybody, you know, Mr. Krieter, they call him the super clerk. He, he, we call him to ask about policies and procedural obligations, because he's that good.
Wow.
My gosh.
He has that memory like Tom, where they remember everything. Wow, that's awesome.
That is so great.
Deserve to retire at 38.
Yeah. Yes.
And that does conclude the Human Resources Committee meeting.
Wow. I'm trying to drag it out till trustee Corrigan. Let me see what other questions I have.
As we wait for trustee Corrigan to arrive, are there any other library events that we may want to highlight?
Well, we have certainly tonight. Come on, Rue.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
So this evening, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Asia Town Art Box, there will be an author presenting a program called Growing Up Chinese. So that's something that Marina Marquez, the manager of community engagement and sustainability, has organized around that specific community. So there'll be lots of fun activities and a special author event. So hopefully I'll see you there.
And is there, was there an event, or will there be in the area out here?
Did you say there was an author? Who wrote that book, Growing Up Chinese?
And I'm blanking on her name, but I can.
Melody True.
Thank you, director.
I have a copy of her book if you'd like it, so.
Thank you.
Where's, at the Asian?
Asia Art Box, yeah.
It's across from the old.
Day, right.
At what time is that?
Six to eight.
Six to eight tonight. And then Erica?
Hi, good afternoon, everyone.
Hi.
So this Saturday, this weekend, I don't know if everybody knows, but it's the 90th anniversary of the Anasfield Bookbook Awards.
Yes.
And so Cleveland Public Library is hosting the celebration with previous authors and jurors this Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Martin Luther King Campus. So we're excited about that.
I will be there.
Yeah. Isn't this the first time that we're doing this? This is, because I know where, the Anasfield Wolf is Friday. And that's at the mouthpiece, at the mouth center, Performing Arts Center.
Right.
And then this is Saturday, so this is something new, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Because of the anniversary.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So is there, this Friday City Club is also special just for the anniversary? Or is that, do they usually do one every year?
Um, I don't think they.
I know City.
Do you mean it's a milestone year for Anasfield Wolf?
Yeah.
It is, and so City Club is, is always typically a partner, but this weekend is really like full of events. Even after our event at MLK, everybody's going over to Ohio City to meet with the authors and hear different panels at different locations. Oh, I think they're gonna be at the Bob Stop, the.
They do have it on the website.
Transformation Station, so I can share the information. So if anybody's interested, you all can attend.
I think it would be good to just recirculate it to the whole.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we can.
I think there's limited seating, of course, at MLK. I don't know how full it is, but I'm sure there's room.
Yeah, there, yeah, there'll be plenty of room, and there are tickets still available on Eventbrite, so.
Very exciting. It's not Pat Benatar, but.
No, but, so.
That seems so, I was so sad to this.
I was there. Yes, I was.
No.
Please, no, okay.
Also, as part of Cleveland Book Fest, we at this library on Friday at 3:00 o'clock are hosting a book release party for The Nature of Our Times. It's an anthology of 200 works of poetry written about earth and nature and the land we come from. It's just part of the Cleveland Book Week stuff, so the WIC Poetry Center is our collaborator on that. And then if you go throughout Maine Library and the Stokes Wing, we have 20 different works of art and poems throughout the space. They're all by Ohio artists or indigenous artists.
You're talking, you say Friday?
Friday, 3:00 in the Learning Commons.
Oh, Learning Commons.
Mm-hmm, yep. And then the exhibition called Relay Cleveland, which is currently on display at the Martin Luther King Jr. Branch, is going to be coming downtown to Brett Hall starting next week, and it will be on display through February.
Do we still have the band in Brett Hall?
It's being dismantled as we talk. So, yes, the robotics team is here packing them up to send them back to their creators, friends with you in California.
Could you send me the information about Friday at 3:00?
Absolutely. I think maybe we can pull together like a little roundup for you all for everything that's going on.
Yeah, everything that's going, that would be nice.
I can't wait to see what's next after the band.
So John Lang, would you like to talk about some of the issues we have at some of the branches? We usually would wait for Thursday, but since we have the time.
Sure, MLK.
Because MLK, I just want folks to, if they go to MLK, to understand what's going on at MLK.
Yeah, you'll see it when you're in MLK, unfortunately. So the library lofts over the library had a plumbing break in the wall of an apartment.
No.
And it wasn't in the unit, it was in the wall, so they didn't even know they had an issue until it was raining inside of the branch.
Wow.
This is two, almost two and a half weeks ago.
Right after, we are very fortunate, it was the same night as Pat Benatar.
Like two hours after.
Which wall is it on?
It's the, if the northeast stairs, so the stair that goes up towards the philanthropy exhibit. So the ceiling on the bottom part, it's a pretty small area, has been removed, let everything dry out, and we're considering options to repair the plaster on the vertical sidewall of the stairwell. So it's a, it's an acoustic plaster, so it's not as simple like, like a drywall repair.
But who bears the responsibility?
We think the developer, and, you know, so far we've been collecting costs, because the, and then the other part was there's a limited section of floor outside the patron restrooms in the northeast corner of the building where the boards all warmed up. So we're collecting proposals for cost now, we're sharing that with insurance and with our partners at the lofts, and we'll move forward from there.
Well.
Pure accident.
You mean it was caused by one of the upstairs tenants?
No, it was in the walls.
It was in the walls.
Just up the pally, a piece of it.
Yeah.
So tell us about walls. What's happening? Somebody said there's trucks or something there, or they saw something, some movement over there?
Yeah, yeah, we, so we proved the guaranteed maximum price. We'll remember going into summer, took us a few months to get that signed and to get the builder's risk insurance covered, so that was in August. So the survey is complete, we're working to relocate a fence on St. Augustine's property, and then we will be driving sheet piles to stabilize the east side of the site. So there's been a little work on site, active work on site within the next few weeks.
Well, no, it's just so funny, I, it's like, hey, what's going on? My lordy.
So, thank you, John.
Sure.
Carrie, do you want to mention the story of the day?
Oh, yes, no.
I do not. Our, our 2024 audit was released today, and with that, as you know, we had a management letter comment that was attached to that audit, and the auditor of state did a press release on it today. So it's been publicly released that the library was a victim of a payment redirect scheme and of nearly $400,000 for which we were able to recoup it all.
And he didn't mention in the article that we recouped it all?
Yes, he did.
They did, under a big banner headline, library loses money.
And, and we were not aware, yeah, we were not aware.
Have any plus audits or anything like that?
No, although when our audit was completed, our auditors did mention that it was another perfect audit, except for the management letter comment, so.
It did, in one of the articles I read, have a comment regarding Cleveland Public Library didn't have the proper financial procedures in place to avoid such a scam. Is there any comment to that regarding?
The library in this situation happened to be a victim of one of our diverse vendors that their system got compromised and in turn turned on us. So there was one small procedure that going through training that was not done that could have maybe circumvented this. We're not aware if that could have, you know, prevented this from, from happening, but yeah, we, we immediately put in very detailed internal controls over our, any type of our vendor additions, updates, and that. It becomes difficult when we're working with a lot of smaller and diverse vendors who cannot keep their systems up to date as well.
So Tana is working furiously over there to respond to folks who have reached out to us, and we have currently had the two news.
It was picked up by Yahoo News as well as Fox 8. We've had a couple of inquiries from Cleveland.com, so we've issued a statement that essentially outlines what Carrie was saying in terms of the internal controls that we put into place, the, actually the cybersecurity training that we launched here at the library, that we recouped the loss, and that we also have a very long track record of receiving awards of distinction from the state auditor.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Brian.
I think it's worth noting here, I'm gonna mention this later, but a sizable portion of this $400,000 loss was covered by insurance, and even with that insurance claim, our cyber insurance premium for the renewal term that we just entered into is less than it was the year before. So all the libraries not in any worse position, in fact, we are all coming out whole here.
Well, I do appreciate us being notified as board members immediately when this happened, and we were kept apprised of the situation throughout, and, and did anticipate having that part of management letter, so.
Yeah.
No surprises, but.
We'll be sitting at the statement of the staff as well.
He said 15 minutes.
No.
I think.
Well, first, let's, let's see if we have any kind of timeline on trustee Corrigan.
Yes, if not, I'm gonna maybe begin on some of the items if I care. Do we have a time, or can we call the garage?
All right, let's go in there. We'll get, can we give Michael one minute?
Yes, yeah.
One minute, one minute.
How about we quickly share, since we've all convened as a board, what our favorite thing or play, event we've attended? Mine was at the Natural History Museum. That was the most fun event, and I took all my nieces and nephews, and my siblings came, and we arrived at like 6:07, and all the dinosaur tails and ears were gone. There were so many people. We went to the new plantarium, which was really fun. I haven't been to one since I was probably in middle school, but the renovations are beautiful there, and it was really fun to see everybody.
Was this over the summer, or was that where you're?
This was, yeah, this was over the summer.
At the Jurassic Jam.
The Jurassic Jam, and it was extremely fun.
All right, very good. You still got one minute there. Come on, Rupi, hurry up.
He's up the elevator. Yes, we moved everybody.
Okay, that makes sense.
Everybody got moved. Yeah, you're in the right place.
The book move that you voted on in June and cleaning and mold remediation is 15% done as of today, which may not seem like a lot, but it's a lot. I compare it to a data download. If you've got 100 megabytes, it takes a certain speed to move 14 and a half miles.
There you go.
You can go at a certain speed, but we're at maximum speed.
Good.
All right, very good, and.
Thank you.
One last piece of good news, the feeders travel.
Orders?
Orders, yep, orders.
Yeah.
We are recently named by Fodors as one of the most beautiful library places, so the main library building, as you know, has celebrated 100 years and was named as one of the most beautiful libraries in the United States.
Yay.
Congratulations, number three out of 10.
So we're.
Who was number one?
Boston.
Oh.
Who was number two?
South Lake.
What?
They have a beautiful library.
Oh, wow.
Trustee Corrigan, we already went through the HR, so we're just gonna, if you want to just start those up.
Okeydoke.
We don't have to read the whole resolutions today, just the topics.
Yep.
And we'll go into it. Thank you.
There we go.
There you go.
Okay. Excuse everybody, case I've been on and a state I've been working on for seven years is coming to final hearing tomorrow. And I got trapped on some last minute, this thing has had more last minute blowups, not to mention two of the principals dying during the COVID crisis and everything else. It's just amazing. It's a movie if somebody would attend it. Exhibit one is a resolution to accept gifts for the month of July, June, July, and August. It's our normal resolution. Move for its adoption.
Ms. Butts?
Second.
Ms. Shaqiri?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan? And Mr. Parker?
Yes, yes.
Exhibit two is, let's see if that's here, there it is, a resolution to accept a grant from the TruMart Fund of the Cleveland Foundation for On the Road to Reading. Resolve, the Board of Trustees in Cleveland Public Library expresses the serious gratitude to the TruMart Fund for its generous support pursuant to the authority set forth in RC 3375.40K. Hereby accepts a grant in the amount of $15,000 to be deposited in the early literacy fund account, 2580464610034801. Restricted gifts to sustain and expand the program and hereby authorizes executive director, CEO, his designee to enter into and execute such agreements and instruments as approved by the chief legal officer that are necessary and appropriate to effectuate the terms and conditions of the grant in this resolution. So moved.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Butts?
Yes.
Ms. Shaqiri?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Exhibit three is a resolution to accept a grant from the Cleveland Public Library Foundation for Senior Digital Literacy Programming, and the resolve is that the Board of Trustees, the Cleveland Public Library pursuant to the authority set forth in 3375.40K, the revised code hereby accepts this funding from the Cleveland Public Library Foundation, the amount of $10,000 to be deposited into the Founder's Fund account, 2030464610026801. Restricted gifts to be used to offset the costs of the recently held Golden Gala and to support digital literacy initiatives targeted at senior audiences. Be it further resolved that the executive director, CEO, his designee is authorized to enter into and execute such agreements and instruments as may be necessary and appropriate to effectuate the terms and conditions of this resolution, which agreements and instruments shall be subject to the approval of the chief legal officer. So moved.
Second. Second.
Thank you. Ms. Butts?
Yes.
Ms. Shaqiri?
Yes.
Ms. Corrigan?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Exhibit four is a resolution to accept the Techcred Program Grant from the Ohio Department of Development. Resolve that the Cleveland Public Library Board of Trustees pursuant to the authority set forth in revised code 3375.40K hereby accepts the grant from the Ohio Department of Development, the amount up to $25,000 to be deposited. of Development, the amount up to $25,000 to be deposited into the general fund account 10104242200, state aid, on a reimbursement basis following successful completion by selected library staff with the above described credentials and authorized as executive or CEO as designated to execute such instruments or agreements as are necessary to effectuate the terms of the grant, which agreements shall be subject to the approval of the chief legal officer. So moved.
Second.
Ms. Butts?
Yes.
Ms. Chikari?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
This is a first time thing for us, right?
No.
No, it's not. The library in '23 and '24, both CPL and CleveNet have received funds and in '23 we received $30,000 in reimbursement and $24,000 for CleveNet and in June, the board just accepted a Techcred grant for the CleveNet staff in the amount of $17,000. So this is, this one is for our property management staff, our property maintenance mechanics, painters, carpenters and property management generalists.
So we already had that for boiler operators or whatever?
We had it one time before, yes.
Exhibit five is a resolution to accept state and local cybersecurity grant from the Ohio Emergency Management Agency. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees expresses its gratitude to the Ohio Emergency Management Agency for its generous support and its pursuant to the authority granted under revised code 3375.40K. Formally accepts this grant in amount of $20,000 for deposit into the Founder's Fund account 2030424210021301 federally, to support efforts aimed at strengthening cybersecurity. Be it further resolved that the executive director or CEO as designated is authorized to enter into and execute any necessary agreements or instruments to implement the terms of this resolution, subject to the approval by the library's chief legal officer. So moved.
Second.
Ms. Butts?
Yes.
Ms. Chikari?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Exhibit six is a resolution to ratify acceptance of a grant from Ohio Arts Council for library dance learning. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees, the Cleveland Public Library pursuant to the authority set forth in RC 337540K hereby accepts the grant in amount of $20,793 to deposit into the public art fund account 233042422012801, state aid, to support this new program and be it further resolved that this board hereby ratifies the grant agreement entered into by the library in July 31, 2025. So moved.
Second. Can you describe who else besides, you say we're partnering, we will partner with local dance organizations and independent artists. Tell us more.
Sure, so do you remember a couple months ago, we had Dance Arts by Regina came and she talked all about the amazing work that her organization does and the role that the library played in?
So she's the gallantryman across from Jeff.
She is and she has a whole group of working dance teachers who work with her.
Carnegie West last?
They have.
Was not correct.
They have, they've done it for many years. I've been lucky enough to visit it and so Director Thomas has long pushed me to stretch beyond the way that we've thought about the arts here at the library and really wanted us to look more at how we're integrating dance into our arts and cultural offerings. And it so happened that Arts Next, this program through the Ohio Arts Council, provides funding for organizations to do innovation, relate innovative programming and activities related to the arts. So happens that because we're a library, basically anything we do is considered innovative in the realm of arts and culture. So Tracy Martin from Carrie's team worked with Hope Wondowski from the Office of Arts and Culture to develop this proposal. We got to listen in on our review and they were blown away that the library would do something like this and we're really excited at the thought of more libraries doing this type of programming. So with this funds, what we'll be doing is commissioning Regina and her team to offer a series of dance classes at three of our branches.
Which tree do you already know?
I'm not going to say yet because we're still scoping them out, but we are working with our public services team and really looking at hitting some of the areas that we have not been able to do as much visual arts and other programming.
Or maybe least.
Exactly, so trying to fill that gap in the communities that we are serving. So yes, we're hearing you loud and clear. We also know that in working with the arts, we want to allow people the chance to express themselves. We also want to allow them to be inspired. So we're also going to commission a dance performance to be done at a location to be determined. So we're working through all of these details. These funds, our reimbursement, we need to expend them by June and we are working with, we'll be working with ops and public services and youth services to make sure that everything that we do with arts and culture is connecting into the broader work that the library is doing. Sort of obsessed with this book right now, Your Brain on Art, and it's all the ways that, not all the ways, it talks about a variety of ways that the arts are enhancing learning and so looking at how the arts are supporting the rest of the work that we're doing here.
I just have a question. The, this is wonderful and everything you described, I'm excited to see more about. Is this, some of the descriptions you gave, is this the sole amount we have towards this project or do we have other supplemental funding for this?
Well, this year, we used some of our programming dollars to commission Japo Cultural Arts to do dance classes and movement classes at Lorraine Memorial Nottingham and Mount Pleasant. So that's underway, has just wrapped up. This is the only funding we have currently identified for this. However, all Ohio Arts Council grants are one-to-one matching funds and so when we put together this proposal, we looked at our dance and music programming broadly and really looked at how we're delivering these types of performances across the system with dance being additive to that so that if needed, we can use those existing funds as our local match for this.
That's great. Thank you.
I wonder, I'm trying to remember all the details of the Lockwood Thompson request and fund and whether he excluded performing arts or is it all visual?
It's visual arts, yes.
Visual arts, okay. I just wanted to be sure, that's what I was thinking, because we could supplement further if we were, but I didn't think that was, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We took the vote.
Ms. Butts?
Yes.
Ms. Chikari?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Exhibit seven is a resolution to ratify and improve the purchase of insurance coverage for policies effective August 1, 2025, whereas in July 21, whoops, basically we did our usual process of reviewing all the possibilities. Carrie, I want to ask this question before I do the resolve. Is 1.5 increase is all we've got? That's a 1.5% increase?
I'd be happy to speak to us.
Yeah.
Yes, we do have a one and a half percent increase this year, which is well, quite low in comparison to the last two renewals. 2023 was about 13% and 2024 was 7.8%. This may be a little artificially low, but still in general, we are doing better than years past. The reason why this one is lower than, than the average for our previous years is that we bought up at a savings last year, two years' worth of crime insurance coverage. So that price is not reflected in this renewal. But we do have, you know, just modest increases on most of our policies, premiums for this renewal period, with the exception of our cyber policy where the premium actually went down. The greatest increase that we are seeing is I think a $10,000 increase on our employment and public officials liability insurance, which is reflective of some of the claims made against that policy in the last year.
And actually, knowing the environment we're in, I know a lot of institutions and people who are paying big chunks of insurance increases, so this is a good job by everybody involved, including our advisors, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Be resolved that the board ratifies the decision to purchase the property, fine arts, general liability, law enforcement, professional liability, automobile liability, umbrella liability, crime and cyber liability through McGowan and Company and Corp. for the fourth year's premium of $577,844.75 for the period of August 1, 2025 through August 1, 2026. Be it further resolved that the board ratifies the decision to purchase the public officials' and employment practices liability through Marsh for the fourth year's premium of $72,000 for the period of August 1, 2025 through August 1, 2026. So moved.
Second.
Ms. Butts?
Yes.
Ms. Chikari?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Exhibit eight is a resolution to ratify the agreement with Bieloski Partners Architects LLC for the Fleet Branch Project. And obviously, this is a pretty important improvement on what we were doing, thanks to the Mandel Grant, correct? And how soon do you think we'll get going on this?
The, we're through schematic design right now. Tentative schedule is for bidding late winter into the spring and for groundbreaking late spring, early summer and to reopen in 2027.
So Fleet is already closed at the moment?
No, no ma'am. We generally go all the way through the design process. We're already in the midst of community and staff engagement and then we close it a few weeks before we break ground, just enough time to get the furniture, the staff.
So when is, when do you anticipate it will close?
It'd be late spring, 2026.
Okay, be resolved that the board hereby ratifies and approves the agreement entered into with Bieloski Architects on July 11, 2025 for the Fleet project in the above stated amounts, which shall be paid from the Building and Repair Fund account 40174005530011740. Construction improvements, so moved.
Second.
Ms. Butts?
Yes.
Ms. Chikari?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Exhibit nine is a related resolution on announcing construction manager at risk for the Fleet Branch renovation and expansion project to be determined by best value and authorizing agreement. And we had three finalists and be resolved that the board of library trustees hereby accepts the recommendation of the evaluation committee and announces the selection of RLH Management Inc. as the firm presenting the pricing and technical proposal, which represents the best value. Be it further resolved that the board authorizes executive director or CEO as designated to enter into negotiations with RLH Management Inc. for construction management at risk agreement and pre-construction phase work authorization agreement in accordance with the requirements of Ohio Revised Code 9.334. The library fails to negotiate a construction management agreement contract with RLH Management Inc. and it shall proceed to negotiate a contract with the second highest ranked firm in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code Section 9.334. Be it further resolved that upon completion of negotiations, the executive director is authorized to execute the agreement in pre-construction phase work authorization with RLH Management for pre-construction services for the Fleet Branch in an amount not to exceed $67,106, which shall be paid from the Building and Repair Fund account 401740055530011740. Construction improvements, which will be subject to approval of the chief legal officer. So moved.
Second. Before we vote, John, do you want, trust you every excited question about them being the?
Second loss.
Brian, I had the same question.
So this is a pro Ohio Revised Code, this is a best value selection, so cost is a component and then past performance and ability to perform the work is a component as well and that's a weighted rubric that the legal team helps us put together. So this is essentially a dead heat on to be $16,000, $12,000 apart on almost $900,000 worth of work. And so when you put these numbers in and crunch them out, it almost comes out to a wash. I will also say that while we're showing the bottom line numbers for each of the firm, the construction manager at risk fees that are submitted have several components. There's pre-construction fee, construction stage personnel staffing, general conditions, construction manager's fee and construction manager's contingency. And so while we're comparing the bottom line numbers, they're not quite equal. RLH Management Company had more of this $868,000 into their construction stage staffing and general conditions, which directly benefit the library. Some of their competitors had more of that bottom line number in the construction manager's contingency and the fee. So even though the bottom line numbers are close, they're not quite, they're not quite directly comparable.
Okay, and we've had experience with all three of these companies, right?
Yes.
We have, the library has not worked with Infinity since I've, since I've been here, but they're a well-known, very reputable company. I have worked with them in my past, my past professional life. I will say, since we just went over the Bieloski ratification for the design services, the Glenville project, which from my perspective, on the, on the building owner's side, was one of our more successful FMP projects, had a Mandel Grant, had Bieloski as the architect of record and then had RLH Management as a construction manager. Now we're on to Fleet. We've got a large Mandel Grant, we've got Bieloski as the architect, so there's definitely some synergy in kind of, even though they're separate projects, having that continuity from one to the other.
And RLH Management's been on other projects of ours too, right?
Yes, they have and they, so they were the CMR again on Glenville and this will be the second large project. They did the digital hub for us, that's before my time at the library, maybe eight or 10 years ago.
Thank you, guys.
Do you have the vote?
Yes.
Ms. Butts?
Yes.
Ms. Chikari?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Exhibit 10, a resolution authorized amendment to agreement for design services for Walls Branch Project and to authorize budget reallocations. Be it resolved that the board of the Cleveland Public Library authorizes executive director or CEO as designated to negotiate and execute an amendment to the agreement with R. P. Madison International Inc. in an amount not to exceed $101,900, the expenditure being charged to the capital project funds, including the Building Repair Fund 401, the Construction Tax Exempt Fund 402 and the Construction taxable Fund 403, which shall be subject to the approval of the library's chief legal officer and be it further resolved that the board authorizes the chief operating officer to reallocate the budget amount set forth in Exhibit A amongst all the budget line items set forth in Exhibit A, provided such reallocations to not increase the overall project budget. And this looks really good to be finally going, John. I haven't seen any equipment there yet.
No, very close. We've done the site survey, we're in the process. We just got permission from St. Augustine to relocate a fence from our property onto their properties here at the construction perimeter and we're negotiating for what's going to be a large change order off the bat to the VAC Drive sheet piling on the east side of the site to stabilize it where the retaining wall between the library property and the St. Augustine property is. So probably more to follow at a future board meeting for that.
Yeah, in my mind, all of a sudden, I'm remembering that there was some excavation or other problems when they did the basement and foundation for that tower, so you want to be real careful there, I think, so that's.
Also remind me, so in 2019, we voted for two architect firms, Bieloski and Madison.
The library's contract is with Robert P. Madison International. They had on their team Bieloski Cleveland, so Bieloski, and just to be transparent, did a lot of the design phase work, developed a lot of the drawings. Madison did all the detailing on those drawings and then now they'll be leading through construction administration.
I thought it was odd having two different architects. I couldn't remember that. Okay, thanks.
So moved.
Yes.
Ms. Butts?
Yes.
Ms. Chikari?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
And I always like to point out Walls Branch is the closest branch to a majority of the members of this board and the fact that it's been delayed this long shows that we're being fair with the rest of the community. And I was, and I was born across the street.
Across the street.
Exhibit 11, resolution authorizing Fourth Amendment to Agreement with Moody Nolan Inc. for Design Services. And be resolved, the Board of Trustees authorize the executive director or CEO as designated to negotiate and execute a Fourth Amendment to the agreement with Moody Nolan Inc. upon such terms and conditions as are approved by the library's chief legal officer, increasing the architect fee by $21,500 for a total contract amount not to exceed $362,688.52, the additional $21,500 being charged in Building Repair Fund account 401748035371011748, Professional Services. So moved.
Second.
And I, this is obviously on MLK and remind me again, what's our percentage over?
This is a, this is a complex one. This is the Fourth Amendment and you have my guarantee, the final amendment on this project. I don't think we knew quite what, how many aspects of this project would present themselves over the course of it. We originally, it's with Moody Nolan, it's not with the Architectural Division, it's with their graphic and experiential branding team out of Columbus. We use the Eastman Project on which Moody Nolan was the architect to start this project and now we've been funding the amendments as we go. So this was to provide specifically graphics development for the MLK project, then the Glenville project. It's also providing us institutional standards to use and it's been a joint collaboration on the, on the library's side between the facilities management team and the marketing team to come up with these standards, which we'll then be able to deploy throughout the upcoming projects.
That's great.
And we're really close, this is going to help us finish it.
So moved. So moved.
Second.
Ms. Butts?
Yes.
Ms. Chikari?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Exhibit 12 is a resolution to advance cash from the general fund of the Public Art Fund and the CPL Center for Media Fund, whereas our Ohio Revised Code, Section 50, whoops, I don't want to read all that.
Yeah.
Be resolved upon addition, adoption of the resolution to ratify acceptance of the grant from the Ohio Arts Council for the library dance lab, this board authorizes that the general fund advance cash in the amount of $20,793 to the Public Art Fund for the same purposes for which funds were established, for which repayment in equal amount is made within a year or until all requests for reimbursements have been received. Be a further result that this board authorizes the general fund advance cash in the amount of $2,000, $2,15,512 to the CPL Center for Media Fund for the same purposes for which funds were established, for which repayment in equal amount is made by the earlier of two years from the date of resolution or such time as the funds being raised. And this is probably the biggest advance we've done in a long, long time, but it also reflects the seriousness with which we take the Northeast Ohio Broadcast Archives and this whole project, and the support it already has from a very, very major philanthropic source. And so I can say, in my 40 years on the board, I don't think there's been an advance this large that we've ever done. But on the other hand, we've never gotten such a return on an advance either, because matching funds are involved here as well, as I understand it, correct?
So we have to raise at least $2,015,000 by March.
Right. We have to raise that amount by March before we get the $1 million grant from Mandel.
No, no, it's not quite.
This is a match. This is the match.
This is the match.
The $2 million, raising the funds of the $2 million. But we need to start on our appropriations, you know, before the funds are raised. So that's why the general fund needs to advance funds.
Yeah. So Shanice might want to come up?
Sure. So this, the Mandel Foundation, part of the agreement for getting the $1 million challenge grant states that we raise the money or our organization can provide the money. And so we did get approval for that. In addition to that, allowing us to start now will significantly help with us fundraising, because there are certain components of this process in year one will help us get materials to show to funders so that they can, you know, just further demonstrate the value of investing in this project. So we're really grateful for the board's consideration of this request, and we look forward to raising as much money as we can.
I mean, I think our, our taxpayers want to see us, you know, create this digital library. So I appreciate us doing it this way.
And I don't know who the right person to ask is, but somebody I ran into recently when they heard about this and were excited about it, they said, how are you going to prevent what happened to the museum in Washington, DC? And I had forgotten about that getting kind of bankrupt or what happened there.
Oh, you're talking about the money aspect.
Yeah.
That's a direct.
No. Well, I mean, that was, yeah, that was a for-profit entity.
Oh, it was?
Yeah.
If I must be, the, about, I mean, what, the idea is that we are going to raise the bulk of this funds over time. We're going to raise the bulk of the funds over time, and then at some point in the future, a percentage will be absorbed into the operations of the library, as would any department in the main library. I think, I think that's the.
We're going to institutionalize this.
We're going to, so, so, but to get over the, the initial hump of this huge outlay of, of cash, we're, we're, our goal is to raise that philanthropically, to allow us to then institutionalize it, so we don't have the same issues as they had at, at the museum.
But it's definitely an end of March deadline.
No.
No.
That is the match date for Mandel.
The match date.
So if I may.
And this effectively is the match.
This is effectively the match, but we are going to raise, work on raising the funds. So we're, we're saying to Mandel, we're, we're in, we're, we're doing this. But we need a little more time, I think, on the foundation side to build that infrastructure to raise those large amounts of money.
Yeah. Justy, but these funds get us started, but it's not the totality of the budget.
So this, so the $3 million is the, is the total cost for the first year, which is the biggest expense of the whole project. That's equipment, that's hiring people, but the, the staff will be throughout. The, the equipment is, is a big expense. The, the IT infrastructure is an enormous expense. We're going to have almost two petabytes of data when this is done. And I'm not an IT person, but that is an enormous amount of data that we will have to preserve in perpetuity. We will have to be able to store huge amounts of data while we're working on the project and then, and then preserve that data. And so I encourage you to Google how much data is two petabytes later. I, I, I read something that said it's all the, more than all of the information in all of the academic libraries in America. I don't know if that's true, but it's an enormous amount of data. Every frame on every film is a file, is a high-resolution file. That, right there, is, is enormous.
The only library I know of that deals in petabytes is the Library of Congress.
You, that, maybe the British Library.
Well, I mean, in the United States, I think that's the only one.
Yes. So if I may add one more thing, when we created the CPL Cleveland Public Library Center for Media, the idea is that hopefully we will find a very generous donor who would like their name put on that, in front of that. So it would, it would then become the John Doe Center for Media at the Cleveland Public Library.
Dorothy Fulltime Center.
Yes. Well, if Dorothy Fulltime would like to give us $10 million. But we structured it so that we, there is a huge naming opportunity. We have multiple layers of naming opportunities. This is at the very top. So, um, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Did we vote on this?
Did we vote? Yeah, okay.
So moved.
Ms. Butts?
Yes.
Ms. Chikari?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Exhibit 13 is a resolution authorized agreement for installation of boilers at the South Brooklyn Campus, always a necessary thing. Be resolved that the Board of Library Trustees hereby adopts the determination of the library administration that the bids submitted by Calvary Mechanical is the lowest responsibility for among the two bids received and authorized the executive director, CEO, or his designated to enter into agreement with Calver, Cavalry Mechanical, I said Cavalry before, I apologize, subject to the approval of the chief legal officer for the South Brooklyn Boiler Replacement Project for an amount not to exceed $150,480, which expenditure shall be charged to the Building and Repair Fund, 401-785-0555300. Construction improvements, so moved.
Second.
And John?
Yes.
Ms. Chikari?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
And obviously.
We need a boiler.
The reason for my slippage is that boilers is one of the things I think is being all over hell, so that's why I confuse Calvary and Cavalry.
Thank you.
And Exhibit 14, the Seventh Amendment to the Year 2025 appropriation, whereas be resolved that the sums indicated in the attached Seventh Amendment to the Year 2025 appropriation schedule be approved. This is our usual housekeeping matter to keep us up to date with what's actually there and what's actually coming in. And anything major to talk about there?
We're appropriating the grants that were brought before you today, and also the architect and the CMR fees in the Building and Repair Fund. And year one costs for CPL Center for the Media, out of that $2 million advance, we're appropriating $442,140 through, for the, to get us through the end of this year from that advance.
That would conclude the Finance Committee report.
Thank you. Trusty Corrigan. We already did the Human Resource Committee report while you were on the showway.
Did we vote on that?
Did we vote? Oh, we have to vote on the Exhibit 14. I'm sorry.
And the motion?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Butts?
Yes.
Ms. Chikari?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Perfect. So we did the Human Resource Committee. At this time, I move to temporarily suspend the regulations of the Board of Trustees for the purpose of considering a walk-on resolution and voting on the same for passage.
So moved.
Thank you.
Ms. Butts?
Yes.
Ms. Chikari?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Rashid?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan?
Yes.
And Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Whereas the Cleveland Board of Education had its meeting on July 25, 1985, appointed Thomas D. Corrigan to the Board of Trustees at the Cleveland Public Library to replace Dr. Louis Raymond. Whereas Cleveland Municipal Court Judge George W. Tromble administered oath of office to Mr. Corrigan at the regular meeting of the Library Board of Trustees on September 19, 1985. And whereas Mr. Corrigan served his first seven-year term with distinction and was subsequently reappointed to the CPL Board of Trustees in 1992, 1999, 2006, 2013, and 2020. And whereas Mr. Corrigan served as Chair of the Personnel Committee, 1987 to 1988, Chair of the Finance Committee, 1990 to 1991, and 1998 to 1999, Chair of the Minority Contracts Committee, 1993 to 1999, President, 1991, and 2010 to 2014, Vice President, 1996, 2001 to 2003, 2006 to 2007. I know. 2009 to 2015, Secretary, 2004 to 2005, and 2016 to present. And whereas as a practicing attorney and a lifelong resident of Cleveland, who has been active in public and community service for more than 50 years, Mr. Corrigan has contributed significantly and selflessly to the growth and development of Cleveland Public Library as a responsive community organization. And whereas Mr. Corrigan's leadership for major capital improvements to main library and the development and execution of the 10-year facilities master plan, oversight of three national searches for esteemed library directors, Marilyn Gal, Mason, Andrew Vanapen, Jr., and Fulton Thomas, Jr., tireless advocacy for the passage of multiple levies that sustained the library during challenging economic times, and his role as the board's resident historian and archivist have contributed significantly to the growth of the People's University. And whereas Mr. Corrigan, after a decade-long dispute, successfully negotiated the distribution of State of Ohio Tax Fund among the nine Northeast Ohio library system, culminating in the growth of the largest regional electronic catalog sharing system in the country, including the implementation of the Greater Access Card and the Know-It-Now service, the first-of-its-kind live librarian reference services. And whereas the relationship Mr. Corrigan developed with the Library Society of China greatly enhanced the library's reputation on the global stage with Mr. Corrigan serving as an ardent champion of cooperation and collaboration between the two library system. And whereas with four decades of distinguished service, Mr. Corrigan is now the longest-serving library trustee in Ohio Public Libraries and in the 156-year history of Cleveland Public Library, having surpassed the record set by Abiel Joseph in 1938. Now therefore, now therefore being resolved, the Cleveland Public Library Board of Trustees for itself and on behalf of the library staff and the community commends Thomas D. Corrigan for his 40 years of service as a library trustee, a tenure remarkable not only for its unequal length, but more importantly, for the unwavering passion, dedication, and love that he has brought to the institution and expresses his deepest gratitude and admiration for his lasting legacy. So moved.
Can we take the vote? Do we drop it?
Ms. Butts?
Yes.